We'd like to go ahead and start this meeting this evening. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. May we have a roll call?
Rick Berger.
Present.
Christina Chris.
Present.
Amy Laura.
Present.
Carrie Labella.
Present.
Stacy Killian.
Present.
JD Skelton.
Present.
And Ken Warner.
Present.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Do we have a couple of announcements we'd like to make?
We do. We want to point out a couple of things. There were a couple of questions in the consent agenda regarding 4.5, the Creating Positive Relationships Contract. I did not have time to get answers to those questions, so we are removing that for tonight. We will bring that back after I've answered the questions. I apologize for not having the time today to get those answers to the people who had those. I also want to point out, in new business, Kristen McClellan, an attorney from Ice Miller, was joining us earlier this evening, and she has agreed to stay with us and give a brief presentation on the different financing options regarding facilities. So she's going to be 5.4 in the new business, and she'll give us a little short preview and an update as to, for some of us, a reminder about school financing regarding facilities.
Thank you for that. So just as you're sitting there, if you had any comment maybe pertaining to Kristen's presentation, you may submit to do a public comment for that. And then if you were to come on the CPR this evening, that has been removed to bring back at a later meeting. But we are going to go ahead and move on with our presentations this evening. Our first one is the Indiana State House Art Exhibit. Ms. Shayla Fish, VCSU art teachers and students.
We have Ms. Shayla Fish and Mrs. Brittany Perez from schools. They're going to come talk about it, and then we have some artwork from the students in Tennessee as well.
Wonderful.
You guys want to come on up?
Thank you for coming this evening.
Hello, I'm Ms. Shayla Fish from West Vigo Middle School.
And I'm Brittany Perez from Woodrow Wilson.
So I'll talk about like what this is, first of all. So every March in Indiana, we join a nationwide celebration called Youth Art Month. This is a time dedicated to shining a spotlight on the vital role visual arts play in a well-rounded education. This month is more than just an event. It's a powerful reminder of how art allows students to express themselves, build confidence, and develop unique ways of thinking that no other subject can quite match with, in our classrooms. And then here in Indiana, we're proud to send student artists from each school to represent us in the Indiana State House. So in Vigo County, we have Mrs. Perez, me, and we also had Mrs. Suzanne Finn from Dixieby Elementary to send artwork as well. So the artwork is displayed all month long in the heart of the State House, where lawmakers, visitors, and staff pass through daily. It's a beautiful space, and seeing student work showcased there is truly powerful. For our young artists, it's more than an exhibit, it's an honor and a moment of pride. It tells them their voices matter, their creativity is valued, and their efforts are worthy of recognition on a grand stage. Supporting our education isn't just about nurturing future artists, it's about supporting future thinkers, leaders, and storytellers, and that's why we celebrate Youth Art Month so intensely every March.
So I just love this opportunity because it really allows our students to get to experience the State House, which is something that many in our state have not. And it builds confidence that I think, you know, we just don't get to do often. And so it's just a wonderful way to really show what our students are capable of and to show them what the power of education can do.
All right, so we've got a few students who want to show you some artwork, and we've got a couple who would also like to speak to you tonight. Wonderful.
We would love to see it.
Yes. Yes, if we could go ahead and have all of the five students come up here, please.
And then show our school board numbers or artwork.
Are you guys comfortable if we ask you some questions, possibly?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so up right now, we have Finley Price, and then Beatrix All, and then...
And that's Jerry Cole.
Natalie Shear, and AV Templeton.
And Jaclyn Cork.
Wow.
Wow. Now that I have the opportunity to see it, I'm impressed. Would any of you like to come up to the microphone and explain what your project was and why you're proud of it?
I think a couple of them actually have, I would say, prepared statements.
Okay.
Sounds really serious.
They're prepared, in other words.
Great.
If you'd like to have them come over and speak, then.
All right, Finley and Beatrix, if you could come this way, please. And you can move the microphone if you want to.
Hello, my name is Finley Price. I'm very thankful that I was chosen to have my art piece of a cardinal featured in the State House. I worked very hard on my art piece. My inspiration for it was, I love cardinals. They're very beautiful, and I see them all the time on the branches of my tree. Although I love seeing cardinals in the summer, my favorite time is to see them, my favorite time to see them is in the winter months. It is so nice to look out my window on a snowy day and see a majestic cardinal sitting on a tree. Also, it has been known that when a cardinal comes by you, it is a deceased relative checking in on you. I also chose this animal for my art piece because it is a state bird of Indiana. That is why I chose to draw a cardinal. Thank you for listening, and thank you to Mrs. Perez for helping me and being an amazing art teacher.
Hello, I'm Beatrix All, or Be for sure, as you may know. Last month, my art titled "The Kwadi," also pronounced "Cody," was entered into an art competition, and I was a chosen winner. When making this art piece, I had decided I wanted to capture the beauty of nature, whether it was through plants or animals. I researched different animals to find out, to find one I found interesting, and after many potential options, I settled on the Kwadi. I really enjoyed using the Kwadi as my own muse and featuring its beauty, such as its fur pattern and bushy tail. I'd like to give a special thanks to my art teacher at Woodrow Wilson, Mrs. Perez, for believing and admiring my skills as an artist, too. Overall, it has been an honor to have my art displayed and recognized at the State House, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to experience this as a young artist.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask, were there certain parameters you had to follow to submit this artwork? Or was this something you guys all just thought of on your own, and it was something you were passionate about to create through your art, and then it was chosen, or how did that work?
I don't think there were. I think all I was told is we have to use colored pencil.
Oh.
Or like pencil.
Okay.
So all of the students were allowed to submit pieces, and then from those pieces, I was allowed to choose ten. And so there wasn't a ton of, you know, restraints put on the students when it came to the materials, but it had to be a hanging piece, so ceramic artwork or 3D art was not included in this show.
Okay.
So how much times, those two, or how many hours did you put in the draw list to finish it? How much time did it take?
It took me a while, because first I did it in pencil, and then I had to get all the colored pencils. And it took me a while to do the background, because my gray pencil started running out. So probably like, if, because I worked on it for multiple days, I'd say like in total, like five hours, maybe.
Wow, and yours?
I also did my artwork over a few days, but I think I've worked kind of quick when it comes to my art, so it probably only took me a few hours as well.
I can't even draw a stick man, so.
What about you lovely ladies, how?
If any of you would like to speak about your piece or give us more information about your piece, you are welcome to step up to the microphone.
But if you don't want to, that's you can just shake your head no, or you're good.
I do like the can. My wife loves cans, so I like that one. Tell me a little bit, what made you draw that? What's the name of your can?
Nala.
Okay, thank you.
If we could, if you could amuse us, if you could turn around so that those in the audience could also see your artwork.
Yeah, turn yours.
That'd be wonderful.
If you could turn around so that the other people in the audience can see your artwork.
Yeah, turn yours.
And then our viewers that are watching online can also see it.
We know that art is very personal, so thank you for sharing your pieces of art with us.
And I believe maybe the young lady in the green shirt maybe wanted to say something?
Yes, I was getting ready to say that.
I was going to tell you.
Yes, please, please.
So this was an order assignment in art class that was finished by us, where we had to copy a picture that we painted up with a bunch of different flowers and animals to it, and then we did collage, and we had to copy it onto a wall on the paper. And I had taken it home multiple times, so in total, I think it took me a lot to complete this to finish up.
Wonderful.
Could you step a little bit closer? Because yours caught my eye, and I wanted to see it just a little bit closer.
Does anyone want to share just, how important is art to you? To be able to express yourself through your art? Is it something you hope to continue through your schooling? Yeah. And how many of you do art on your own at home? Wonderful, I love it. Please don't lose that, your artwork is amazing, and thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you sharing your artwork and for being here today.
They're all beautiful.
Thank you. Next, we have the Terre Haute South Vigo High School Merida Mexico Mission Trip Recap. I hope I said that right. I have Mr. Daniel Card and Bryce Norris. Welcome back, gentlemen. Wonderful.
You guys did make it back, didn't you?
I followed along on some of the Facebook postings, so I saw you made it there safely. Don't be afraid of it.
You look more comfortable and less nervous this time than you did a couple of weeks ago.
Let's just start off with hola, right?
Hola, yes.
How's it going?
We're good, how about you?
Obviously, I'm back from the trip, thankfully. But I think it was a great experience to start off with it. It was definitely not something that I was expecting when I first showed up, and when we started to do all of it, it was, it kind of caught me off guard. But once I, once everybody got to know everyone and everything, it was, I started to kind of fit right in and felt like family. So it was definitely great. And it was crazy how welcoming everyone was to the churches and all the, and everything, and giving the legs that we gave to people. I mean, there were people crying because of it, and it was just crazy. And I got told that people would take days off of work to come and at least try and get a leg, just for the hope at least. So I thought that was an amazing thing, that the impact that we're doing really made an impact on their lives, so.
So what, can you describe your response, your reaction when you saw the joy or the emotion from the person who got fit?
Yeah.
And started walking?
Yeah, I mean, I just, knowing that a piece that I made was actually working on, and people walking on it made me feel amazing. I mean, it was just like, I really don't have words to describe on how good I felt about it.
It's a pretty special feeling when you feel so happy you can't even find a word to describe it.
Exactly, yeah.
When you were down there, did I understand through the media that you fitted forty more people?
No, so we had thirteen legs that we could only bring. And we had them in two suitcases because we had to build them when we were down there. And so we only had, we could only get about thirteen to bring down there, but there was about forty people that showed up.
Okay, there, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we had to say no to a couple, to a lot of them, but we still got their information and what size they needed and everything for fitting, so that when we go back another time, they can get their, they can get a leg.
Are there plans to try to make a second trip?
Oh, for sure. After coming back from the first one, I mean, I want to go to as many as I can, so.
Is this something you can extend beyond high school and still be a part of?
I don't know, I think, I think so, but we'll see.
You hope so, right?
So.
So there was essentially a waitlist?
Yes.
And you have the specifications brought back to create the prosthetics for them?
Correct, yeah. And we'll send them a text or something like, hey, we're coming back. Make sure to, you know, show up, and the possibility is there, so. We had one guy that we, that we gave a leg to, I mean, that he had lost his leg in a cab incident, and when he, in, yeah, nineteen ninety-five, so he had been off of, he'd only had a leg for a long time. And, I mean, he stood up like it was nothing. We put a leg on him, and he pretty much walked right out of the place like it was nothing. And that was, that was awesome, just to see him be able to walk out. And the fact that he can get his job back as being a cab driver, because he can now use his leg, so.
So is it an impact for his family, too?
Yeah, and these, these are the kids.
Yeah, they're some of the kids.
Yeah.
Zach, you're from Thompson Thrift. What was your impact, or what was your experience, and how Thompson Thrift played a role in all of this?
So this is my third trip to Merida, Mexico, and so...
Oh, microphone, please.
We've been going on about five of these trips to Central America each year to different communities that we sponsor, and we do a lot of different work while we're down there to encourage the communities and the churches and the people that we visit. So there's a lot of different facets to it, but the prosthetic legs are a special piece to what we do when we're there. And there's a big need, especially in developing countries. Most of amputees in the world are in developing countries. And for a lot of different reasons, one, not having access to healthcare or money. So one thing that's kind of striking to me when we go on these trips is most of the people that have lost limbs are from preventable things, either from standard infection that they could have got a medication for that would have prevented it, or diabetes, a lot of motorcycle accidents in developing countries. So it's hard when, for us, it would have been something that could have been preventable here with adequate healthcare. But the other thing is, a lot of the people there in Mexico and Central America, who we help, may only make about seven thousand US dollars a year. And so the cost of prosthetic limbs, if we didn't do them through this program, they'd never be able to afford one in their lifetime, so it's kind of hopeless for them. So to go down and be able to reach out to those people and help who we can, you know, sometimes it's discouraging because there's such a big need. We can go to one place, and there may be, like we said, forty, sixty people that show up needing a prosthetic leg, and we can't help everybody, but even when you help one person, I mean, those people's names, their faces, their families, it just, it always sticks with you. And, you know, I was super excited to have Terre Haute South go with us on this trip, Daniel and Bryce, because we've had some other schools around the US go with us, but to have schools here in Vigo County get involved with the program is just super encouraging to us and just excited that hopefully we can get more schools and more people involved and really see the impact, not just of a project or something that you're doing for school, but something that changes someone's life, changes their trajectory in life. And so it was, it was an awesome trip, and look forward to going back next year.
Have you seen any interest from other students about potentially going on future trips?
So for the future trips, I've got Bryce looking into his successor. And he's got, he's got some prospects. So we'll get those students on board and then see if they'll be comfortable with going on the trip. If not, we'll still create the prosthetic parts here. So we won't stop the project just because they're not interested, but they may not want that opportunity because of nerves or various reasons.
Will you always try to schedule it around a spring break time, or just when, or does that not matter?
I don't know how the scheduling works. That's, I just get told when, when to be there and where to go.
I think for most of us up here on the board, we're all like, is this going to continue? Because we're very excited about it and hope it does, especially with our hometown schools. I think this is very exciting and amazing work that take with you the rest of your life, so thank you so much. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I actually have one. Is there any interest from North High School or West High School students to be involved in this?
I don't, I don't know that one.
I'm just wondering, do they even know?
We're the guinea pigs.
I think the important part of it is it's one thing to learn information so that you can pass a test or take a test. It's another thing to learn information and then use it to help others. And the key part of this is, we took knowledge that we, that we learned, and we applied it to a real-life problem to try to make someone else's life better. And that's the real value of this. And so this was a pilot program, so obviously, the concept of expanding this to where we are utilizing our learning for meaningful purposes, that's exactly what this is all about and what it's for. And the more kids we can have happen during our time of K to twelve, great. But even if it doesn't happen during K to twelve, we plant the seeds of service to others so that when they use their knowledge, they're using their knowledge to make our communities better.
Do you feel like that fits, Bryce? Well, I guess before we, before you leave us, do you want to share one memorable moment that stands out the most? Food, an interaction?
Yeah, you were talking about the food. You were really excited about the food.
The food was actually really good. I will say that. Man, I had no problem with eating the food. But I think a memorable moment was just all the TT serve people that were out there with us, like just getting to know them throughout, what, four days? And like, the first day, it just kind of all clicked, and we all were just like family, like I said. I mean, it was just kind of like, everyone knew each other, and we could make jokes with each other and, you know, just have a good time and enjoy the trip. So I think that was a really, a big impact on me. And just the, seeing the different lifestyle that people live compared to what we do in America and the advantages that we have that some, some of those people in their rural countries don't. So I think that was a very big impact on me.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing. Are there any other questions or comments, or anything else you'd like to share? All right, well, thank you for coming, and I imagine you're going to be busy sharing your story with your successor as we keep moving forward, so keep those notes going, and we hope to hear from you guys again soon. So thank you so much. It is now time, oh, well, for our special guests here this evening, we would love for you to stay as long as you would like to hear the regular business of the board, but also at this time, you are free to leave. It's a good break to do that if you have other commitments or things you need to do at home, so do not feel obligated to stay if you have other commitments. Thank you for coming. Wait just a moment. Also, I want to share just for those viewing online, if, I know last time we had some audio issues. If you find that if you're viewing online, please don't hesitate to, if you know a board member, maybe to text them or maybe send something on our Facebook page that audio is having an issue, and we can address that if that's, if that's the case. Now it's time for our first call for citizen comments. These are on comments for the agenda items only, and I don't have anything at this time, so we are going to move forward with our consent agenda. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented, as amended, excuse me.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for our consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or abstained. Thank you. Next, we're moving on to our new business, the Personnel Report and Professional Leave Request, Mr. Michael Cox.
Good evening, administration seeks approval of the Personnel and Professional Leave Request as presented this evening.
I can entertain a motion to open up for questions?
We'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Professional Leave Request as presented.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
We always just want to hear a general, you know, update, where are the big gaps, that kind of thing.
Actually, right now, we see postings in the middle school, because we are going out and visiting the schools right now. Middle school is completed before spring break. High school has wrapped up. Elementary, there's a lot of them, and I'm trying to get those done. We should be done with those by Wednesday. And so, once we have all those, we'll get postings out. Looking for science, special ed, English, math, foreign language. And so if you're looking at different postings for the middle school business, there's eleven that runs the gamut of people that have retired or spouses left the corporation and is moving away from us. And we have sixteen at the high school posted right now. And so that, right now, is the items that are on our website. I've met with high school students, met with all thirty students that have been in our schools and outside in some of the surrounding counties. Two weeks ago, interviewed all of them that are actually ready to go to our elementary, because fifteen of them actually have degree within the elementary world. There's a lot of those. There was a few math, one foreign language person, and a couple of physical education people out there. So that's out of the thirty from Indiana State, University of Southern Indiana. We traveled down there last week on Monday, met with a lot of different students there. Over twenty of those visited. There was not very many within the University of Southern Indiana. Math, more math, upper education, so that was more beneficial. Actually, met a person that had a biology French degree. So that was kind of like finding Bigfoot out there in the world, so. It was entertaining. So, it was entertaining. Lot of good candidates out there, so looking forward to next school year. We will be staffed and ready to go.
Sounds good.
One way or another.
How many retirees do we have this year?
Right now, there's twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that may, may change. It may depend on what they're thinking, because people are still meeting. I hope nobody retires, because there is a teacher shortage out there, so nobody leaves. But that's on the record.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the personnel report and professional leave request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or abstain? Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Would like to move on to the recommendation to award a bid, Mr. Doug Miller.
Good evening. I respectfully submit for your consideration a proposal to purchase two thousand, two hundred Acer Chromebooks for our kindergarten and fifth grade students. The request for proposal was advertised on March sixth and March thirteenth. Proposals were due and opened in the business office on April second. After reviewing the submissions from five vendors, three of which fully met specifications, CDWG was identified as the most responsive bidder, offering the lowest price of nine hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. With this in mind, I'm seeking your approval to move forward with this project.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to award the bid for the Chromebook.
Second. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Doug, is this part of our, this part of our normal rotation, right?
Exactly. Yes, we're replacing the Chromebooks. We're working towards a cycle where we'll replace kindergarten, grade five, and grade nine in one year. And so, we're working towards that, that cycle. Last year, we, we replaced nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five of them at one time. And a few years from now, we'll be on the, the cycle of three, three grade levels a year. So, yeah, we're getting there.
Is there warranty with those?
There is. We purchased a four-year extended warranty. It'll be repaired as many times as it's broken, but we probably don't want to tell our students that.
Is there a new feature with the Chromebooks that once you're assigned a Chromebook, it stays with you no matter how many times it is sent in for repair?
Yeah, we, we did that last year, working towards getting that same device back to the student for the four years that they have it, and with the hopes of the students care and form a little better. Our repair rate this year is down, it's better. I think last I checked, a month or so ago, we were about eleven percent break rate, which is way down from last year. We were up over, at the end of the year, we were over thirty percent break rate. And we were working with four-year-old devices at that point. So, I think the nine thousand devices, having nine thousand new devices in the fleet's made a big difference. So, I would like to think that we're care and form a little better, but we also are working with new devices.
And that also includes a protective case for each one, correct?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Are there any other questions or comments? Well, thank you. We have a first and a second on the recommendation to award the bid for their Chromebooks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Or abstain? Thank you. Next, we have Project Lead the Way Launch Program, Mrs. Teresa Stuckey. Welcome.
Good evening, and I am really excited to share this with you. So, President Killian, Dr. Hemsel, and members of the board, it is my pleasure to share with you tonight an opportunity with Project Lead the Way Launch, a program through a grant in the year 2025 through 2027. So, the Vigo County School Corporation is requesting approval for the PLTW Launch Program in the amount of twenty thousand dollars of grant. Funds will be evenly distributed between the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven school years. The purpose of the grant is to provide students with engaging STEM learning activities and experiences that prepare them for emerging careers in educate, and educational opportunities. This funding will support the training and participation fees, along with the investment in the STEM modules for teachers at Fayette Elementary to engage in the implementation process beginning this summer. Dr. Caitlin Lieberman, coordinator of grants and assessment, will serve as the grant administrator. And Dr. Janelle Bonomo, Fayette Elementary Principal, and myself, the Director of Elementary Education, will serve as program administrators. So, we submit this for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion for approval to open up for questions and comments.
I'll make a motion to approve the Project Lead the Way Grant Launch Program.
Second that.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I am respectfully abstaining from voting on this, because as you know, I have been an employee of Project Lead the Way for many years, and I believe so passionately in this kind of approach of project-based learning, teaching kids by doing. There is nothing that we could be doing that is more valuable, especially for those young kids, because we know, we know that they need that exposure early. And so, I sit on my hands on the sideline, but you know, I am, I am the biggest cheerleader. I'm so, so happy to hear that this is happening.
Thank you. We've had a team go visit a school, a site that was doing this, and we're really excited.
So, this will be a piloted program at Fayette?
Yes.
With the hopes of information?
Potentially expanding. We'll see how it goes, and yeah, I think, I think it could.
Wonderful. And did you say it starts this summer or the training will start this summer?
We would start the training this summer. We would pick modules to purchase. Our intent would be to start with two modules per grade level, and then we would expand next year to four modules per grade level. So, we would begin the training with the teachers this year and put it into place this fall.
Wonderful.
I have to add one more thing. We have, of course, Project Lead the Way engineering courses in our high schools and, you know, exposing the kids early on to, you know, that it's a scaffolded program and it builds the interest for our CTE and those high-value courses. I will exercise self-control and stop there, but so excited.
I appreciate your support.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second to approve the Project Lead the Way Launch Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Kristen from Ice Miller, our addition to our agenda this evening.
So, we're blessed to have Kristen McClellan join us from Ice Miller, and she's just here to remind us of some of the parameters that we need to work through as we keep in mind that we're trying to figure out a way to upgrade our facilities and renew them. And with that in mind, she's going to help remind us of some of the parameters we have to work with them.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me tonight again, Kristen McClellan from Ice Miller. As we look at the opportunities at Vigo County School Corporation, one of the things I do want to bring up is that we still are in a legislative session, so everything that we talk about tonight may change. We're almost to the end, so we don't think we'll get big changes for Vigo County, but I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that. As you do your facility study and look through necessary upgrades, renovations and improvements, purchase of equipment, technology, any sort of renovations, updates, anything you need, the most important piece that we always want to look at is the total project cost. So, once you're going in and you're diving into that facility study, that'll become the most important, and that is all-in, hard costs, soft costs, and cost of issuance. Once we know the total project cost, then we will know the legal steps that go with it and the type of the bonds that you can issue. So, right now, in Vigo County School Corporation, because your debt service fund tax rate is below forty cents, right now, you could do a project of about six million, six hundred thousand with certain legal steps that would require two hearings, three publications, and about four board meetings to get through. You could also do a project of that size as either a general obligation bond that you've done in the past or lease financing. When you're looking at your facility study and the needs of the school corporation, anything this year above six million, six hundred thousand would be controlled, which would mean we would need to add in one additional hearing. So, for a lease financing that you all have done in the past, it would take about six months to get through that legal process, where with the GO bond, it would take about three to four months to get through the legal process. Again, depending on what your needs are, we would talk about if a project was subject to a controlled process of either referendum or petition remonstrance. But at this point, I wanted to make sure you are well-aware of what we would need, which is that total project cost, so we could determine what legal steps and what types of bonds that you would want to issue. Any questions?
Can I just ask? There's just been some community commenting on us having another study. How important are our facility studies to do that before we move on to next steps?
Facility studies, especially with a school district like yours of the size with the amount of buildings, it's extremely important. What I find the most important about a facility study is it tells you not only what you need, but what you have to have. So, for example, if a building hasn't been touched for several years, you may now be out of compliance with certain federal laws, whether it's ADA or others. So, what's nice about a facility study is it tells you red, green, yellow. What are, if you change now, if you modify a building, you have to be ADA compliant, so it'll show you red, green, or yellow. I think, in my personal opinion, they're extremely important to have.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Just as a reminder, in schools, the maximum term for any of our bonds would be...
Twenty years.
So, we can do up to twenty years or we can do less than twenty years.
Correct.
In terms of the payback.
But not more.
I just want to make sure that our community understands that.
Where other units, where other units have longer abilities, longer ability to issue, yours is capped at twenty years, no matter the type of borrowing that you do, GO or a lease, controlled or non-controlled.
I also just want to remind our community, from a school perspective, the only thing that we have the authority to do would be property taxes to pay these back. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Schools' only type of revenue that they can pledge is property taxes, unlike other units that could pledge other types of revenue. You only have property taxes.
Are there any other questions? Kristen, thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me.
And I'm sure we will see you again soon.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that quick reminder while you were here in town.
At this time, we are moving on to our second call for citizen comments, and I have two. First, we have Dwayne Malone. He is here to speak for the Terre Haute Ten Athletic Report. Just a reminder, we have three minutes. Ms. Shane, I think, will help time that. And welcome this evening, Mr. Malone.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. President Killian, Superintendent Hemsel, all board members and staff. My name is, my name is Elder Dewayne Malone. I come to you tonight on behalf of the Terre Haute Ten and in the name of Jesus. This report may take me anywhere from four to five minutes, so I hope since we have our limited with the amount of people that may be speaking, that if you feel free to extend me a little more time, if you feel it's necessary. The Terre Haute Ten was formed to adjust equitable educational outcomes within the Vigo County School community. Community members have raised concerns with us regarding equitable outcomes within our high school athletic programs. Members of the Terre Haute Ten have heard about, have experienced many of these concerns as members of our community and due to being products of our school corporation. These issues range from mental, verbal, and emotional concerns of student athletes, social economical, racial, and gender discrimination, failure to create an environment where all student athletes feel valued, respected, and included. As an organization who has fielded these complaints, we decided to make a social media post where citizens could express their experience and concerns freely. The Terre Haute Ten also conducted interviews and received many verbal complaints from our community. All complaints we have received to date was against the Terre Haute North Athletic Program. These reports will not mention names of coaches, student athletes, or those who have made complaints. The complaints were shared with the principal, athletic director, and the school administrator of accountability, along with members of Terre Haute Ten. The first program we will speak about is the North Grove Basketball Program. The coach has been described as being hot-headed, having uncontrollable temper, as to belittle student athletes. The behaviors have been described as being degrading and downright mean. The complaints also states that they have reached out to the principal without success. The complaint goes on to state that each year, these issues got worse, yelling, throwing chairs, markers, and clipboards. There was also bullying complaint made about an African-American player who had been bullied on the team. It was said that the incident was swept under the rug because the players were related to the coach's wife. This complaint goes on to state that they understand the need for coaches to be in control of their teams, but this coach's attitude and behaviors are disgusting and embarrassment to Terre Haute North. Another verbal complaint made is that a student athlete was denied the right to be called by her nickname. When speaking with school officials, they were aware of some of these complaints. The concerns were addressed, and that the student athletes in these...
I'll just, I'll just pause just for a moment. It, it is our board policy, Mr. Malone. I'm sorry, we have to be fair across the board with the three minutes. It's our policy. Please feel free to email that or provide a copy.
We, we'll return next month.
Absolutely.
To finish the report.
We, I think we have another meeting in two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Dwayne, can you stay afterwards? Can you stay?
Thank you. Just a reminder, the three minutes, I understand, you know, there's some, you know, conversation about extending it, but it is our board policy and we would have to change our policy to allow it to be longer. We just want to be consistent and fair across the board. But if you have an issue with that, please feel free to contact a board member and talk to us, and we can revisit that if needed. Next, we have Terry Lorenz for recruitment of minority staff, minoritized staff, I'm sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. In respect to recruitment, the Terre Haute Ten since its formation, we've been, one of our priorities has consistently been, please recruit minoritized teachers so that students in this corporation have the ability to see people in positions of authority on a daily basis that look like them. And so, it's, it's great that we're recruiting at ISU or University of Southern Indiana, but let's recruit at a historically black college, and let's make a concerted effort to make the census of minoritized teachers in this corporation consistent with the consensus of the minoritized students. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. At this time, are there any other comments? I don't have any more signed up, but I want to give that moment. Seeing none, we'll move on to our information from the superintendent and board members.
Before I begin with the typical student recognition, I, I wanted to take a moment to clarify some information that has circulated recently regarding the ESSR-related HVAC projects at each of our high schools. I think specifically, the Indianapolis Star did an article earlier today. During spring break, we did receive notification, or we received notification from the current federal administration that there were going to be changes to the ESSR-related projects. We were told that, or there's rumors out there that it was, that they were being canceled, which is not accurate. We have been informed that we need to resubmit the waiver application materials that we previously submitted and that we previously had approved. We are in the process of finalizing this paperwork and will resubmit it at, as requested by the current federal administration. The H, just as a reminder, the HVAC projects at each of the three high schools, along with the supplemental funding, design plans, and bidding processes for purchasing the equipment, were approved by this board in the summer and fall of 2023. Specifically, the bids for purchasing the needed equipment were approved by the board on November thirteenth, 2023. Subsequently, the lowest responsible bids for related construction and installation... Subsequently, the lowest responsible bids for related construction and installation of the equipment was approved by the board on May 6th, 2024. As a reminder, the difference between those two dates was because we knew that there were supply chain issues related to the equipment arriving. So we went ahead and focused on what we were going to need, and then came back later and focused on how we were going to get it installed. Work commenced immediately after the 2023-2024 school year in preparation for when the equipment arrived. This past spring break, the installation of electrical components that allowed us to switch to the new chillers in preparation for the upcoming cooling season occurred over spring break. I think it's important to note that it is not possible for us to prepay for this. We wait until the equipment arrives before we pay for it, and we wait until the work is completed before we pay for it. So for those of you who have been attending our board meetings or reporting on the actions taken at our board meetings, or watching the board meetings through the streaming that we provide, watching them through archived video recordings, or reviewing the materials that we post on our website after the meetings, you are well aware that from the project's inception in the summer of 2023, we have been told that there were concerns about the supply chains and whether or not the equipment would arrive before the December 31st, 2024 liquidation date. As forecasted by the architects, the contractors, and the vendors, much of the equipment did not arrive before December 31st, and therefore, we submitted a waiver to complete the liquidation of the funds at a later date. The waiver request was submitted to the Indiana Department of Education for consideration in May of '24, and after providing additional and updated information about the status of the project in the fall of 2024, because they did not give us immediate approval, they wanted to find out if those anticipated delays came to, came to fruition. The waiver request was subsequently approved on December 3rd, 2024, with an approval to allow us to expend the funds as late as December 15th of 2025. The approved waiver allowed us to expend the monies that had already been encumbered for the project based on the actual arrival and subsequent billing of the equipment and the completion of the installation process. As noted previously, the installation of the electrical components that allowed us to switch to the new chillers in preparation for the upcoming cooling season occurred over this past spring break. We continue awaiting the remaining electrical components to arrive so that the project can be completed. We are hopeful to have project completion before the start of the 2025-2026 school year. The good news is, the first phase of the HVAC project is nearly complete. But to clarify, we did receive notice that we must resubmit the requested waiver information that we had already had approved once. We are finalizing the requested information, making sure that there's no additional information that we need to include, to make sure that we don't miss that, and we will have it submitted by the imposed deadline. We are excited to soon have the project, the first phase of this project completed. For note, I think the repaper noted that we have 5.2 million of the 18 million left to expend. Donna informed me that we did have work completed that is in the process of being submitted and was completed before this announcement was come, or came, which puts us down to about 3.6 million of the 18 million that we're requesting the waiver for. So that's about how much the, that is, to give clarification. In terms of the student part, in addition to the impressive artwork that you saw earlier tonight that was featured at the State House, we want to remind everyone that the 58th Annual Student Art Exhibition opened at the Swope Art Museum on Saturday, April 12th. The student art exhibition is open to the schools in the surrounding Wabash Valley. Twenty-six high school entries were selected by a juror, and five were selected as merit winners. Congratulations to Terre Haute South students Leila Johnson and Gina Hill, along with Terre Haute North students Alan Norris and Ursula Levisay, who were awarded merit distinctions. Entries for the middle and elementary divisions were selected by the art teachers. As a reminder, this art exhibition will run through Sunday, April 27th. So if you've missed your oppo, you have not missed your opportunity to see the artwork, you do have until April 27th to stop by the Swope Art Museum and see the outstanding work of our students. And we are also very grateful for the Swope of getting our students this opportunity. On Friday, in this very room, the annual Battle of the Books was hosted, and if you've ever been to a Battle of the Books contest, you know that there is a lot of excitement surrounding it. Battle of the Books is a day to celebrate literature, hard work, and a little healthy competition. Each participating student committed to reading 20 books in preparation for the battle, also known as multiple rounds of questions based on information contained in the 20 books. A special thanks to retired VCSC teacher, Myla Evans, and the Vigo County Public Library Executive Director, Kristy Howe, for serving as the battle host. Both Mrs. Evans and Ms. Howe read all 20 books in order to formulate the questions that were used throughout the day, and they have to design more questions than they think is necessary because they get the answers faster than we realize they are going to. They are some really, really sharp kids who are involved in this. The VCPL, or the Vigo County Public Library, also sponsors the day's author visit by Leah Park and the missing jewel author, Jenna Yu, which was definitely the highlight for the students, to be able to meet an actual author, ask her questions, and go through the process of how to write a book. Team transportation was provided by a generous donation and grant from the Vigo County Education Foundation, and we thank them for their support and the people who donated to make that possible. In the general education division, Riley Elementary was the runner, or was the winner, and Hoosier Prairie Elementary School was the runner-up this year. In the high ability division, Dixie B Elementary was the winner, and Lost Creek Elementary was the runner-up. The week before, we hosted the, or correction, actually, the day before, we hosted the middle school division of Battle of the Books, and congratulations to Honey Creek Middle School for their win, and to West Vigo Middle School for their runner-up status. I also want to point out that not to be left out, we also celebrated Math Madness the week before spring break, where we set up a very similar competition around solving math problems. So if reading is not your cup of tea, but solving math problems are, we had a special day for them as well. Unfortunately, I do not have the announcement of the winner for that one, so I can't congratulate the winning team, but I can tell you that when you walk in this room as a former math teacher, and you see the entire room filled with students focused on solving a math problem, it's really cool. General education, or correction, the week, also, we need to congratulate South High School Junior Sophia House, who earned second place in the Martin Luther King Junior Indiana Association of School Principals State Essay Contest, and congratulations to teacher, Mrs. Peggy Grabowski. This is the second consecutive year that a South student has placed in the top three in the state. Congratulations to Devaney's Robotics Team, who won the Robot Performance Award and the Overall Champions Award at the Spring Fling First Lego League Challenge. If you recall, we approved with some grants to offer this at the elementary level instead of it just being at the high school level. So those robotics that you saw at the high school level, we're taking that down to the elementary level, and they are learning it as well. There is lots of, just for everybody to be reminded, there's lots of information coming out through Parent Square and social media for summer camps, academic and athletic opportunities, plus the Vigo County School Corporation Jump Start Summer School Program for incoming kindergarten students and current students through second grade. There's the University Connections Program, which is our summer learning program in partnership with Indiana State University. Those are taking place June 16th through the 27th. The 2025-26 school year enrollment is open now for new students, kindergarten, or students who have left VCSC and like to return, or for those who have just moved into our area. We also have enrollment open for early childhood. And I also want to point out that earlier today, I was in a meeting where we finalized our first activity in partnership with Ivy Tech University, where seventh-grade students who are getting ready to go into their eighth-grade year, we have a special summer opportunity for you to learn about career technical education and the opportunities offered at Ivy Tech and at each of our high schools. And we do that in the seventh grade going into eighth grade, because eighth grade is when they fill out their first high school schedule and want to, them to understand the opportunities that exist. That is going to be the week of June 23rd through the 27th. Thank you.
I have one little addendum for student, congratulations.
Okay.
Our Area 5188 Robotics Club did make it to the state competition this year. We have had so much fun watching our oldest participate in that and getting to, to just experience the excitement of it. It is the coolest, nerdiest sporting event I've ever been to in my life, and I, I hope that we can just get more and more people engaged in that. But congratulations to them and to the mentors at Rose Holman, who are supporting them. And yeah, just kudos to all the kids. They worked really hard.
Well, I would just like to say, wow, we have amazing students in our corporation that have parents investing in their future, as well as staff and teachers doing the same. And I just want to kind of challenge those out there, either listening at home or in the audience, to, to maybe latch on to something that may speak to you, one certain topic, maybe if it's the 5188, I'm sorry if I say that wrong. If you want to be a champion or ambassador of robotics, to talk about that in our community and share the good news of what we do. I think so much, we hear the negative, we really need to, to just push that positive voice out there and tell our story of what we are doing, because yes, we have issues and we are addressing those, but my goodness, we have amazing students and amazing things we are doing, and we will continue to work on the issues that we do have, but as well, support and celebrate the, the wins that we do have. So just as a personal request, please, you know, help champion that, that even if it's just one small thing, that would be wonderful, and I know it makes our students days if we do celebrate them. So continue to bring those things to, to us as a board, your student groups to come and present. I can say, I see my kids and everything that these students come and present, and it's just very heartwarming to do that. So again, thank you to everyone for what you do.
I'll share really quickly. Right before spring break, I got to go to Wabash Elementary and watch their Winnie Pooh the musical, and it was wonderful to see all the hard work the kids had put in and the costumes, and it was definitely a highlight, so.
Well, at this time, we are closing out our meeting. Our next meeting will be April 28th, 6:00 p.m. here in the conference center. Mr. Malone, please feel free to come and, and continue on, that you don't have to give your introduction, we'll pick up right where you left off. I apologize, we had to cut you off, but feel free to share that. But please come, attend our board meeting, April 28th, we will see you there. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn. Seconded.